Masha Allah. The Peace Academy Administration is a beautiful treasure to the Muslim community of Dukha. Alhamdulillah. The level of humility, the level of sincere trust and a feeling of doing what's best for the community is Masha Allah. We all need to have that, Masha Allah. So, I think we're gonna go ahead and begin now. For future reference, I know sometimes things happen and so forth, but for future, we wanna try to start at 11:00 AM sharp if we can. This is feeling out there as far as our video, beating our technology going here, Masha Allah. So, can everybody hear me fine or do I need to turn on this microphone?
That's fine.
Is anybody can't hear me? Come on. Okay, so let's go ahead and begin. We are embarking upon a very noble journey. A journey that much of the Muslim world has a great need of. And that is to go into the Holy Quran and understand the Quran as intended. The study of the Quran as the Prophet ﷺ described it is people gathered together studying the Quran. Peace and tranquility and the mercy of God will descend upon those people. And the angels will surround this gathering and ask for our forgiveness and ask for our praise where it counts in the heavens. So this is a very noble gathering, Masha Allah. The first thing that I want you to know is that these notes right here, they're going to be published online and you can download them if you like. And so you will never need to write anything that's up here. The reason why we have notebooks, those of you who chose to bring notebooks is there will be explanations of things that are up here that might come very useful to you. And so I found whenever I was in Michigan and I used to go to a class where the Sheikh was teaching the Bukhari, the most authentic book of Hadith. There's a book called Fat Haldadi, which is the explanation of the Hadiths found in Bukhari. And so they told me, you know, one of the brothers will be translating, so bring a notebook, right? And I said, "No, I'm just listening." And they said, "No, you have to bring a notebook." So I brought this little, you know, the small one, you know, that you keep, that you can fit here. And over the period of two years, I filled up three of those little notebooks of notes. So whenever I moved to Egypt and went to go study in Egypt and in Kuwait and Allah blessed me to get a good hold of the various Islamic sciences and their language and all of that. When I came back and I was looking through some of the things that I had, I started looking through those notes. And even though it's in English as a new student, there's such beautiful treasures of knowledge that I was able to write down that had slipped my mind over the last four years, right? And so to go back through there was like a zooming to some very concentrated valuable knowledge because that's what you're looking for when you take notes. So that's basically what we're doing here. When you go to college or high school, you take notes, why? Because there's a test, right? So we're taking notes now because we live in a test. And we need certain information that will encourage us and motivate us to live or react or promote concepts in a way that's pleasing to Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. That's basically what we're doing, Insha Allah. So the first thing we'll begin with is what is the Quran? The Quran defines itself and this is one of those things whenever I talk to some of my Christian friends who feel very strongly that the Bible is the literal word of God. The word Bible does not even exist in the Bible. You know what I'm saying? Why is that? Because in fact, without opinions of where it came from and all that aside, the word Bible is a Latin word referring to a collection of books. That's what Biblio, right? And so people went around talking to Jewish and Christian people over many years. And they said, "Let me, which one do you think is scripture? Which one do you think is scripture?" And it was a clearly 100% human effort to put those books together and to form this book, right? The Quran, on the other hand, is one book sent to one prophet and it very clearly defines what it is and what's its intended purpose and how you should view said book. So the first thing is the word Quran, it means the recital. Or more correctly, the thing that is read. What is read, right? The thing that is read a lot because it is coming from Qara'a. You know, Iqora, Bismirah, Bika, Ladi, Khada. The first verse is revealed to the Prophet Muhammad, "Read." Now, why would we say that that which is read is more authentic than the recital? Does anybody know? Can the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, when Gabriel comes to him, is he able to recite? Recite? Yes, he can say things. Recite means to say it, right? To recite it. Can he read? And the Hadith in Bukhari, which there's no question about, the prophets respond ﷺ was, "Ma anabiqadim." "I don't read. I don't know how to read." So he clearly understands the linguistic connotation of this command to read something. And he's confused because he doesn't read, right? Now here's an interesting thing, we're gonna start off building our Iman on the first step here. There is a miracle in the fact that the Quran is called the Quran. There is an actual miracle. When I say a miracle, well, the way it calls itself today is pretty profound, is what I mean to say, right? What book is read more than any other book in the world?
The Quran?
For sure. See, Muslims tend to read the Quran for memorization and just to listen to its beautiful cadence. Whereas most Christians, they read the Bible not very much, you know, from my experience. And they read it to learn something about the history of prophets, right? It's pretty much only for the purpose of seeking knowledge, right? Whereas the Quran is a book that is read and recited and recited every single day all in the mosques of the world. Fajr, Maghrib, Asha, it's being read and read and read, right? And the average practicing believer reads a lot. There are millions of people who memorize the whole Quran. The only way you're going to retain memory is that you read about 10 to 20 pages a day, right? Millions of people like this, right? And so that's basically, the Quran is called the thing that's read. The Quran defines itself as the book, right? The book, which is going right back into what was supposed to be read. It's called the criterion, Al-Furqan. Al-Furqan, right? What does that mean? It means the Quran is a book that will clearly show you that this is good. This is a good lifestyle. These are good attitudes and characters and these are bad. This is the criterion, what is a good way and what is a bad way. The remembrance, Ad-Dikr. That which will get you to remember your Creator, your purpose in life, what you're supposed to do every day, how should you be a person who is a godly individual? The Dikr, right, the remembrance. And it's Ad-Tanzil, the revelation. What does that mean, the Tanzil, the revelation? It means, the word Tanzil is a little bit different from Inzal in that to bring something down once is Inzal, Anzal, right? And in the Quran, he refers to it like that, but he generally refers to it as Tanzil. To send it down over and over and over to the Prophet ﷺ, right? So that's, when we say revelation, is because God is sending down Angel Gabriel and to the Prophet ﷺ these teachings. So those are the titles. Those are the titles of this Quran. It's the definitive title. The next move here is the general descriptions. What is it described by, right? And so Nuh is the first one, right? It is light. What does that mean? That means you will find yourself in a world of darkness until you read the Quran and understand what it means. Then things will be very clear. Does that mean everything will be hunky dory with white picket fences and rainbows? No, because that's not the world we live in. But you will understand why things are the way they are and what is your role in it and how do you plan for your exit of this place that we're in, right? So that's the light, right? And if you ever, are there any other converts in this room? We have a couple of converts. Every convert that I've ever spoken with, that is the very significant part of their journey is that when they read the Quran and understood it and they learned from it, that at some point this epiphany started to come to them and things just became very clear. Something that they always felt was always in their heart about God and self and purpose and prophethood and this whole purpose of life thing, it became very clear, right? So that is the Nuh. And that's why it's also called Buddha, guidance. It is a book of guidance. It's supposed to show you to the right path. It is Rahmah. It's mercy. It tells you all you need to know so that you will have salvation, right? What is the way of life? How should you live? Each prophet came to the people sacrificing a normal life and clarifying the means of scripture and understanding of a divine connection, right? That's what the prophets came to do. The revelation, it was the clear means so that nobody would say on the day of judgment, "Well, I didn't know what I was supposed to do. I didn't have a manual," right? So it's a mercy. Shifat. Shifat means a healing, right? So there are two schools of thought in the history of Islam about this definition of the Holy Quran. So you have a consensus of Muslim scholars, meaning every scholar has always understood that part of what this means is that when you have doubts in your mind, when you have depression, when you have anxiety, when you have anger problems, when you have jealousy problems, these, what we call the diseases of the heart, right? All Muslim scholars throughout history have understood that the Quran is a healing for that. Why? Because in one of the verses it says, "Shifa ul limafis sudu." It is a healing for that which is in the hearts, right? But you have a large group of other scholars that are looking at the Quran as the speech of Allah, as it calls itself as well. And they're saying that this is holy words, right? And they're saying that it seems that we have a couple of examples within the life of the Prophet, peace be upon him, that people would use the Quran to try to heal physical ailments. So you have other scholars that say, "We will not accept that. That's not what the Quran is." And Sheikh Yusuf Qaradaw is one of those. Al-Afadhou, in his book, Kaisa na Ta'awum Ma wa Quran, he explained that if you read the whole Surah and you read about how people got sick and many people got sick time and time again, you almost never find an authentic example of somebody saying, "Okay, read Quran on it," right? So there's something called Ar-Ruqya al-Shab'iya that is well known and well established as an Islamic concept of trying to heal or cure somebody of some sort of affliction. And really, if you look at that, the one group of scholars are saying, see, it's the actual words themselves that's healing the person. The others are saying the words in them and the prayers and the sincerity behind them and the divine connection of the answer to those prayers is what's healing the person if indeed that was intended to be healed. So you see the nuance in that one? Okay, it's also known as Maw'igah. Maw'igah, admonition. An admonition is basically a type of preaching that's supposed to remind somebody or give somebody an advice that will help them correct their path. Someone who will bring somebody back to a right lifestyle. It's called the Quran, Quranun Karim. It's often translated as noble, but the general default of the term Karim is generous. It keeps giving, right? And that's well known for the people who sincerely read the Quran. You know, there's a famous scholar, Abu Hassan al-Nedawi from India, one of the great scholars, Allah (ﷻ) that passed away in the last 100 years that the world testified to his greatness. He said when he was almost 80 years old, that he had this epiphany and he started learning things from which Surah of all Surahs. Suratul Kahf. Suratul Kahf is the Surah that all religious Muslims are gonna read on Thursday night and Friday morning. And they've been reading it their whole life. And he's been reading this Surah his whole life and then almost 80 years old, he started seeing and understanding things that he never got before. Which tells us what? The Quran gives and gives and gives and there's no end to what it can give. The Quran is Mubarak. It's blessed. What does that mean? It will bring good things to you in this life and the hereafter. It is Mubin, clear, and we're gonna go into detail about that later. But generally, the general reality of the Quran's guidance is that it is clear. Any common person can read it, understand it and their life will be blessed by it. So the attitude that maybe some people might carry, which is, "Oh, well, we're not scholars. We don't know and so we can't understand Quran." That is not what the Quran is saying about itself. It's a clear book. It is Bushra. It's good news. It's supposed to give you good news about the way you're living your life and if death comes to you, right? So as Muslims, we know that we should not become proud of our deeds and think, "Oh, well, you know, I'm a good Muslim, so I'm going to heaven." But you should be very hopeful and comfortable if you are living that Quranic lifestyle, that you have glad tidings coming to you. The Quran is Aziz. Aziz tends to mean mighty or powerful, but here I think it's according to some research I did, it means distinguished. It means the Quranic words in Arabic and the meanings that will come in any language will clearly be set aside from all other speech, from all other teachings, from all other self-help books. Like right now, you have all of these self-help books. This is the new big genre of the modern age because why? People are moving away from religion. If you look at the numbers of agnostics, atheists and non-religious or even people who are spiritual but not religious, believe in God, that number has grown vastly in the last 20 years, right? 20 years ago, so many people said, "I'm Christian in America." Many of those people do not, right? Because of just the lack of confidence in the scripture to guide their lives and make them better people. And then the last thing here is illustrious. Quranun Majid, which is why I named my son Majid. Illustrious, what is that really meaning? It means in all of its aspects and all of its teachings and all of its angles, it's gonna have an elevated up ground, a higher moral ground. So that basically concludes the definitions of the Quran. Do we have any questions about that one? Okay, move please to the next slide, Masha Allah. Now, we're gonna be going into what is known as the commentary of the Quran. A Tafsir or a Tewir, right? Those are two words in Arabic that are basically referring to in general terms the same thing. To explain the meaning of words, right? So explaining the meaning of the Quran has certain methods. The best way to understand the Quran is if you have one verse that you're not sure and it talks about a subject. But then in another verse, it talks a lot about that subject. So now this part of the Quran is helping you understand that part of the Quran, right? So a Tafsir in Quran, the Quran is the number one thing, right? So that's the first one. The next one is Hadith. And so Hadith is basically the statements of the Prophet ﷺ. The Quran said in Surah, "Nahd" to the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ, "We are revealing this Quran to you so that you could clarify to the people what has been revealed to them," right? And then the Quran says, "In many places to follow the messenger and listen to the messenger and take what he gives you." So whatever bring that the Islam is only the Quran and we don't need Hadith, the Quran itself in dozens of verses refutes in very clear terms that claim and that ideology, right? And so the Quran can be, but the Hadith, we need to make sure, is that an authentic Hadith? And even within the authentic, I don't wanna go too much into this one, but I'll just give it to you if those of you that feel like you're gonna take it home, it will help you, Insha Allah. There is a scholarly debate on Hadith that are known as authentic Sahih. There's something called Mutawatir. There's something called Ahad. Mutawatir means so many companions. 10 companions. So many of their followers. So many of them, each in a chain of narration, all of them saying the same things. When we say Mutawatir, it's almost like the Quran. The Quran is a Mutawatir book in its whole, to a high degree. Meaning what? You can't doubt it. You can't sit there and say, "Well, maybe the Quran changed." Because you have millions of people knowing and hearing every day in the Salaah, in the Taraweeh and the Qurans have always been available, unlike the Bible. You can go to any mosque in the world and find an Arabic Quran and it's always been like that since even before Uthman's time. Uthman's concerns was that people have written down some wrong dialects and some wrong vowel sounds that change the meaning. So he said, "We need to make sure that this is pure Quran and there is a Muslim state sanctioned by the people who know and memorize the Quran correctly, that people are not promoting a wrong Quran." So basically they made an institutionalized Quran process. So the Hadith is there and that is if it's authentic, Mutawatir, that becomes an authoritative meaning of the Ayah, right? If it's Ahad, the scholars said, if it's a matter of belief, they debated. Ahad means it's only one or two or three of the narrators are agreeing upon the story, right? Everybody is authentic, the person is a reliable narrator, but there's only a few of them, right? So they're debating if it's talking about belief systems. I'm sorry I'm going into too much of this rhetoric, please. But the Hadith, generally if it's authentic, you're going to accept it as an explanation of the Quran. If it's weak, then if it's a matter of law or if it's a matter of general character, then it could be used as supplementary evidence to support a general concept that is established in a very clear terms. The Arabic linguistics is another fundamental foundational concept of explaining the Quran. It is not acceptable for anyone to say, "I'm gonna teach you the Quran" unless they have been trained and given a license in the Arabic language and its various sciences, right? So because that's the key, right? That is why, and that is where we have some unfortunate situations where many translations of the Quran were actually made by someone who has never fully and thoroughly been trained in the Arabic sciences, right? Good willing, sincere intentioned people that they embarked upon this idea because of a feeling that this is something that needs to be done and they were not qualified to do so. The opinions of the scholars, so we look back to the companions of the Prophet, peace be upon him. If they are saying, many of them, this what this Ayah means, that's probably a high probability that that's what that Ayah means, right? But if they differ and the Sahabah did exert their intuitive and insight in their general understanding of religion about those things. Somebody might say, "Well, they would never say anything about the Quran unless it came from Rasulullah ﷺ." Some people say like that. I've read some scholars say that. My contention and the contention of the scholars that I'm convinced with is if it came from Rasulullah ﷺ, it becomes a what? A Hadith. It's no longer an opinion of his. He says Rasulullah said, Salam Allah عليه وسلم. The only reason why he would not say that is because he's either not sure or in fact he is just exerting his own intuitive understanding to explain it to the best of his or her ability. So that's there. So those are the followers and even down to there, Imam Shauqani is one of the great scholars of Tafsir. He lived 200 years ago in Yemen, rahimullah ta'ala, right? And so great scholar, amazing Tafsir. He came to some conclusions that are not well cited by the early generations. And other scholars have done this, right? He's a great scholar with a great foundational background to do that. So he can do that, right? Now the next one, your own feeling. What does that mean? The Quran itself, who does it say it's talking to? Ya ayyaha ladina? Aamanu, right? And who is, what does it tell you to do? Think, ponder, contemplate, reflect, remember, right? The Quran is encouraging us to think and to gain inspiration from this book, right? But as we see here in the bottom, the first four of these methods of explaining the Quran are taught as a way to get deep on what we're doing in this class and what we're planning to be doing in this class for good. The last one, before it's said to anyone as some sort of teaching of the Quran, it needs to be reviewed by a scholar, someone who's qualified and then they would authenticate that for you. This kind of moves into a realm of something in Arabic called Ilham. Ilham is a fact of the mystical connection between all human beings and God. This is a fact. But Ilham is not a source of revelation. It is not something that I can have this experience or I can read something in the Quran or have a dream and then it's very spiritually profound for me. I cannot go around telling you this is guidance. This is where some groups have gone astray, right? So that's basically how we deal with that situation. Is there any questions on the sources of commentary of the Quran? Okay, go ahead if you can make the, please, the next one. Yeah, there we go. Now we're getting into something that is very fundamental in understanding the Quran and very relative to us as people living in America. And that is the Meqhi versus the Medani Quran, right? Meqhi is an Arabic way of saying something from Mecca. Medani is a way of saying something from Medina, right? So Imam al-Nasaburi, which is a place in Persia, in basically northeast Iran, almost on the border of Afghanistan. So Imam al-Nasaburi was one of the great scholars of the early generations of the Muslims. He wrote a book called At-Tambiha la Fati' Ulumul Quran. And this is in the third century of Hijra. This is over 1,000 years ago, right? So in his book he wrote, over 1,000 years, and that's something very special about our nation, guys. You can buy this book in many places in the Muslim world, in library, that was written 1,000 years ago, right? And the same language that we're learning when we learn classical traditional Arabic is what that book is written. Some different usages than the common modern folk, but whoever studied the Quran and so would see that. So the Sheikh here is saying, one of the best sciences of the Quran. When we say sciences, I have to clarify because a lot of people, they were in the Haun Yahya of modern age or everybody thinks science of the Quran, they think, "Okay, we're gonna find out how, you know, fish and helicopters are mentioned in the Quran or something like this." And that's not what we're talking about, right? And we have to be, we have to be careful when we get to those verses to not take the Quran as a book of science. It is not a book of science. It is a book of guidance, right? It's meant to guide you to the right path. Because the Creator made it, you're gonna find some profound things that science will say, "That's a fact." But that's not how we read the Quran looking for that. So we say the sciences of the Quran, how it was revealed, who it was revealed to, how was it gathered, when it was compiled, what is abrogation? So many things are in the sciences of the Quran, right? So Imam al-Nasaburi said, one of his favorite was that knowing the order in which the Quran was revealed and which was revealed in Mecca and which was revealed in Medina. Why does he say that? Because it helps you understand spiritual development. It's very crucial, right? When we say that, the verses, we're gonna see, the verses revealed in Mecca for the first 13 years of the Prophet's mission are quite different and distinguished than the verses revealed in Medina in the last 10 years of his life. What does that tell us? When you're new to Islam or you're living in a society where you're a small group surrounded by a bunch of non-Muslims, the priority system might need to be a little bit more meticulous and structured towards understanding this concept if you're gonna succeed. Why? Because that's how Allah did it. Does that mean we negate or erase teachings of Islam? No. It means we set priorities that are relative to the reality that we are living in because Allah gave us that example in revealing the book. And we see Imam Ali, Rukhiyallahu ta'ala, Anhu, our Prophet's beloved son-in-law and cousin and our fourth caliph, he actually is well known in the books of sciences of the Quran to keep the order of the Quran. He would keep with him, so the first Ayahs was what? From the 96th chapter, Suratul Al-A'raf. Iqora, Bismirah. So the beginning of his Quran starts out like that, right? And that's how he's keeping, right? Now somebody might say, "Do we have that Quran today?" We do not. Why? Because it's not Quran. You know what I mean when I say it's not Quran? Quran is the way Allah revealed it from Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Suratul Fakihah, Surat al-Nas. That's Quran. If somebody swiss mixes it all up, that's not Quran anymore. That's something somebody has done, right? So some people requested because of their insight into this valuable knowledge, "Why don't we do this class based upon the order in which it was revealed?" The reason is, is because when Allah revealed it the way, when Allah ordered it the way He did, which in itself has many miracles to it, you will see that the first Surah is a Meqhi Surah. And it is a comprehensive Surah that gives you the full understanding of who is God, who are you and what is your relationship with Him, right? This is what the questions people asking. When people are in the dark and they're looking for religion, aren't those the three questions they ask? Suratul Fakihah addresses those in very clear terms. Suratul Baqarah starts out how? Going into all the rules of law and this is Haram and that? No. This is the description of people who have spirituality who are believers. These are the descriptions of disbelievers. And these are the descriptions of people confused in between the two and they have hypocrisy. So there's five verses at the beginning of Baqarah dealing with believers, two about disbelievers and 16 dealing with hypocrisy. Warning people who read the book that faith is a dangerous journey. That if you're not on guard, which is why the word Taqwa is used to describe it, which means to be on guard, right? Then something will come and basically taint your faith and its understanding and the practice of and even the conveying it to others, right? So then right after that, if you notice, it goes into worship your root, who created you and everything. worship your root, who created you and everyone before you, so the creation story, right? And then he talks about the creation of the earth and all these favors to us. So, if you look at Baqarah, it has a Meqhi beginning, even though those verses were all revealed in Medina, right? So, and I don't wanna get too complicated on this, but that's basically why we're not studying it. Allah made it in the order it's in, and we're gonna study it according to the way it is. Uh, Imam Asriyutli, he wrote in his book, "The Order of the Surahs." So you can know from that. And he'll talk about that. Every time we start a Surah, we will know when it was revealed, whether there's certain contexts and circumstances revealed around that. We're gonna focus a lot on that because that is a big key to understanding the whole of the Quran. Uh, is there any questions up till now? Yes?
So just, uh, we, uh, repeating again, uh, the order that the verses revealed to Prophet Muhammad SAW is the Quran, right?
Yes. If you take the Quran and you change its order, it is no longer Quran. Quran is a divine entity. It is the speech of God, and it is known as... So, when you study the sciences, the books of the sciences of the Quran, it says it defines it. And it says, uh, it begins with Surat al-Fakihah, it's saying Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, and it ends with Surat al-Nas, Mina al-Jinnaati wa Na. And it is in the order that it's in, and that's the Quran. So for anybody to present something differently and call that Quran is going against what we've all known in 14 centuries, what's the Quran. Now, are those verses of the Quran? Yes, right? They're just mixed up, which would negate its divine nature. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, can you please go to the next one, Shal? Meqhi Ayat and Surahs, right? So these are the verses that were revealed in the first 13 years, they're called Meqhi. Uh, these verses are known for general contents. So when a verse has a Sejda in it, right? The Imam says, "Yes, judul, or yes, jud, was jud," and then everybody goes into prostration, right? That is a Meqhi Surah, right? That is a Meqhi Surah, it was revealed in Mecca. Somebody might ask, "Why?", right? And it's very important that you ask why when we go into this class. Some people were raised to think, "Well, we should just take whatever Sheikh says, or whatever it says, and not question it." No, the Quran tells you to question things and to ask about things. Now, the problem comes when you turn into a philosophical debate of your mind versus the other one. That's where we stop, right? We're not trying to debate, and we're not trying to prove I'm right and you're wrong. We're trying to, if it's not clear, we're trying to gain clarity and understanding. And we should always ask questions until we get to a point. Now, when it comes to the nature of God or the unseen, as we'll get to in a moment, that's not meant to be clear to you. We are little ants on this earth, you know, in this giant universe. Okay, we're not the holders of all sacred knowledge, and our mind wraps around everything with pure, uh, capability and all of that. That's not the reality. That's where arrogance comes in. So, uh, the verse of frustration. So the Prophet SAW is being sent to a people who prostrate to what? Idols, to statues that they made. So these people in Mecca are all bowing down to statues, daily, right? So, what happened when the Prophet SAW was given revelation? In Mecca, a verse would talk about how Muslims should prostrate to who? Allah, right? And not prostrate to those, right? And so then, the Muslims would be seen saying something about prostrating to God alone, and then they would all prostrate. And they would not prostrate to the idols. The next one, wherever it says, "Ya ayyuhannas." If it says, "Oh mankind," it is, uh, there is Surat Hujrat for example, as "Alladina amanu, al ayyuhannas." So that would mean that it is a Medani Surah, it was revealed in Medina, right? Uh, so, but if it only says "Ya ayyuhannas," without "Ya ayyuhalladina amanu," "Oh mankind, not all believers," then that is a Meqhi Surah. Why? Because the Quran is intended for all peoples, right? I read this whole long write-up in Arabic by a priest from a Coptic church that was saying, "The Quran is God's revelation to just Arabs." But the messenger of Jesus was for the whole world. And I'm like, "Hold on, who told him this?" Actually, if you go to the Bible, in two places Jesus said, "I was only sent to the lost sheep of the house of Israel." That's what Jesus said in today's Bible, in any translation you get. "My whole purpose is only for the Jews." "I was sent to say, I'm their Messiah." "I'm saving them from their mistaken, confused ways," right? And the Quran says in so many places, "Inni Rasulullah ilaykum, jami'aa, ya ayyuhannas." "Oh mankind, I am the messenger of God to all of you," right? So that is a Meqhi, uh, the word "Kallah." In Arabic, when you say "Kallah," it like gets everybody's attention, it means, "No." Whatever you thought, you're about to hear the real story, right? Kallah, right? So whatever you were saying, or heard, or believed, your attitude, "Kallah, no way, that's not it. What's gonna come after?" Why? Because in the Meqhi Surahs, Allah wants to get the attention of non-Muslims to listen to it. And because the Arabic society was very entrenched in poetic embracing of recitals, that was very common. They didn't read it right, right? So they heard and listened and recited a lot. So that's why you get "Kallah," as well as why you get Surahs that begin with "Alif laamin, habim." All those are Meqhi, right? Getting the attention of everybody. Here's some letters. Listen to how these letters are put together afterwards, and think if that's some word of some shepherd guy who never knew poetry, who doesn't read it right, right? Who's never learned the ways of the old nations and all of that. Is it clear? Okay, next one, please.
Yes.
Can I hold up one question?
So, when you said that the Surah is in Meqhi, like, is that mean, for example, like Baqarah, everything that is al-Maqhiyah?
Pretty much Baqarah is like that. Yeah, okay. There are some overlap, we're gonna get there. But yeah, some Surahs do have a couple verses or a handful of verses that are from the other one, and they go into the same one, right? So there is some overlap. So it's not a necessary fact that if the Surah is known to be generally a Meqhi or a Medani Surah, that every single verse in it was revealed in that place, right? Good question. Next one. Meqhi Ayat and Surahs. They are known for specific themes and priorities and focus, different than the Medani, right? Telling us what? When the Muslims were a small group, they're new to Islam, they're surrounded by non-Muslims. That environment requires a certain, uh, priority system. That's what Allah is saying by sending the book in this way. So, the main thing is obviously focusing on pure monotheism. Believing in God alone, not worshiping other than the Creator of the universe, and that's why he keeps mentioning it, these Surahs created, he created. Who created other than Him? This is mentioned in many places in the Quran. Is there a Creator than other than Him, right? So this is the main focus. And then worshiping something other than the all-powerful, all-knowing Creator of the universe is absolutely illogical and unacceptable, is what this Meqhi Surahs focus on, this concept. Now, somebody might say, "Well, today in America, you know, people really don't worship idols." I bet you that they do. People are worshiping money, it's capitalism, right? People are worshiping themselves, right? This Quran talks about this and addresses it.
Self-pride.
Yeah, self-pride, what I want, how many likes I got, Facebook, how many friends I have, you know, their phone. People seem to be worshiping their phone. People just like everywhere they go, they're looking at their phone, right? They can't stop. The phone is like the most important, most special, most... If you took some people's phone and threw it away, they might act like somebody just died. They might start crying and screaming and yelling and acting crazy. Why? Because that's an attachment, that is a deep affectionate devotion that they have to this entity, right? That's what worship is. Yeah. So, um, yeah, it focuses on the hereafter Allah. Why? Because the Arabian society of Mecca did not believe in a hereafter. And this was one of their attacks at Allah, because they used to call God Allah in Arabian, before the Prophet Muhammad SAW. This isn't something that came as some holy word just to the Prophet, so now we know who got it. They've been calling Him Allah. And they used to say about Allah, "He doesn't, he's not able to revive dead beings." They said that. And so the Quran devoted heavy emphasis in the Meqhi Surahs to tell them, "Of course, the one that created you in the first place from nothing can bring you right back to the way you were after you've dead and withered away," right? If you're saying he's the Creator, which they said, why are you now saying illogically that he can't recreate you, right? And they said, "Really what they're doing, and what many people in the modern times are doing, they're trying to escape accountability of human action," right? This is the big trick of the devil. Let's find a way that you will feel like you're not responsible for your deeds, and you will not be accountable for them, right? So that means you'll do what? Anything that suits your desires, and that will encroach upon the rights and the feelings of those around you, right? Because it will be about you and not about others. Which the divine message is compassionate person, as we were talking about in the Qudhu yesterday. Uh, general morals and character. So in the Meqhi Surahs, there's no laws, there's no rules, there's no haram and all of that stuff. It's just generally saying, "Okay, don't kill people, you know, don't steal." So when we say haram, the main serious stuff, right? Not like detailed rules, like you see people looking at the back of the food they buy, you know, the reading, looking up on their phone, everything, they're dying glycerides and all. That didn't exist in Mecca. That wasn't the focus and the priority for the Meqhi system, right? Now, does that mean that maybe those people who are doing that now are wrong? No. I'm just saying that that's not the way it is, it was, was the priority system. So the concept of morality, trust, sincerity, honesty, these, uh, you know, responsibility, patience, these are highly emphasized in the Meqhi. And that's what we should be emphasizing here. Building our character and our faith and understanding of God and purpose in life, and how to be an upright person. Uh, that was... So the lessons from the prophets. So, lots of stories of the prophets and lessons from the prophets in the Meqhi Surahs, right? Now, did the people of Arabia believe in prophets? No, they did not, right? They did not believe in prophets, they did not have prophets, that wasn't part of their theology. So the Quran is emphasizing, "This is not some new thing, that some guy just came up with something." This is a continuation of something that's been going on since the beginning, right? Uh, the, uh, the Quran in Mecca is very short verses with very powerful eloquent Arabic, right? And the Medani verses are, in many cases, very common, simple, clear, conversational, and to the point teaching. Why, can you imagine that once? There's a very distinct reason why it was like that. What's the difference between...
Yeah, maybe because now we can walk into like a state, you're talking to almost the whole world, like... Other citizens or not, mainly all Arabs.
Right.
In Mecca, it's like kind of a center of, at least just...
That's definitely one angle of it, is that in Medina now, there's a whole civilization being addressed, rather than just the small group of people trying to reconcile spirituality, theology, and philosophy of life. Now it's about building a whole state and dealing with others and so forth. So it needs to be very clear on the terms of the teachings of a full system of the society and civilization. But I'll tell you why it is. The main reason is, in Mecca, there was a powerful message being brought forth in language that is high above all of their points. The style of the way the Quran was talking to the people, and the points that were being made, and how they were being made, I will say it like this, many people who are born and raised speaking Arabic and went to school and learned Arabic, when they're reading some Meqhi, uh, powerful presentations of things, they might find themselves like, "What is that saying?" right, today? Whereas in the time of the Prophet, they're like, "Wow!" They got it, because that was just, they were very deeply entrenched in a poetic society that was highly emphasizing pure, beautiful, eloquent Arabic. So that was part of the Quran proving itself to these very proud Arab people of their language, right? And so, once now you have everybody on board, everybody believes this is a divine word of God, and you have thousands of people believing that, now they're the state, the need for that has died down, and then the need for what Dr. Muhammad was saying came forth. Uh, any questions on this one? Okay, if we can please move to the next slide. The Medani Ayats. So these all came after Hijra, after the Muslims migrated from Mecca to Yethir, and which became the city of the Prophet, Medina to Nabi. Uh, so once they moved there, then the verses were revealed, the first thing was detailed legislation. Making a full system of law, right? How is a society governed, right? In all of its aspects. Discussing the concept of hypocrisy. Why wasn't there a discussion of hypocrisy in Mecca? No such thing as hypocrisy. If you say, "I'm Muslim in Mecca," people will start humiliating you, abusing you, and causing problems for you. So who wants to go through that, right? So, there was no such thing as hypocrisy. What happened in Medina is, some polytheists started to see how many people in their family have become Muslim, and they, they don't wanna get into a conflict, and some of them have certain agendas, and some of them have certain financial economic deals with the Jews, and they wanna kind of play this hypocritical role there. So the Quran is addressing them, and actually calling them out in detail, what they're up to, what they're doing, why they're doing it. And many hypocrites embraced Islam again thoroughly, completely, because the Quran is talking to them like, "How does it know what my intentions are?" right? So then it knows who is the one talking. It's not Muhammad, he doesn't have supernatural powers, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. He is blessed with the one who has supernatural powers, right? So that's the hypocrites. Second thing is, the people of the book, right? So there was no such thing as people of the book in Mecca, right? So, other than maybe a couple of converts here and there, generally speaking, the vast majority of the people of Mecca, and I'm saying 90-some percent, are either pagan polytheists or Muwahid, people who say, "We believe in God, we're sticking to this old story of Abraham and all of that." Those are about 10% of the society. Uh, but they had become seen as a mythological group over time. Because of the power of idol worship and the economic interest that it brings to Mecca and so forth, right? So, the people of the book were being addressed. So God is talking all about how to talk to the people of the book, understanding their beliefs and so forth, and dealing with them. Uh, the next one is, uh, war engagement, right? Now you have these constant threat of the polytheists from Mecca, and then, within a year and a half, two years, it became apparent that the Jewish tribes that the Prophet had came and announced himself at day one, "I'm the messenger you're waiting for, I'm the prophet that is written in your scripture," which is why those three Jewish tribes were there in Yethir. They said to the people there, "We're waiting for this great prophet that will become this great powerful person, and when he comes, you Arabs will be our subservient." That's what they were saying for decades on In, right? And so, when he came, he told them. They said, you know, only one or two of them embraced Islam, and most of them said, "No, you're not Jewish, so you're not, you know, we'll never bring an Ishmael life," right? And so then, the Prophet's companions over the next couple of weeks deliberated, and the conclusion they arrived at was, "Well, these three Jewish tribes live here, and they think I'm a liar or attacking me, that's fine, but they're citizens of this place, they have to do with our economy, they live here, it would be unjust to, just because they disagreed with our belief system, to create a problem for them." So the Muslims basically set up the Treaty of Medina, or the Constitution of Medina, which basically said, "Jews are equal members of the state as whatever remaining pagans that are there." And basically, the system of law of a diverse society, where there's different religions, where everybody has their full right, nobody can tell them, "You can't practice your religion," nobody can stop anybody, everybody has their economic interests. Nobody can say, "Well, we're the Muslims, so you pay us a lot of taxes because you're not Muslim." That didn't exist. They basically said, "Look, we live here together, we need to respect each other, we need to not make treaties with other tribes that are against one of us," right? Unfortunately, uh, some of those Jewish tribe leaders, within a couple of years, started to plot with pagans in Arabia to destroy Islam of Muslims, because they knew that it's growing. And the prophet they were waiting for has become an Ishmael life, and he's growing, and everybody's following him, and people are really believing in this in a lot. So it became a concern of theirs. The Medani are long Surahs. Baqarah, Al-A'ghraan, Nisa, Al-Maidah. And An'Am is the longest Meqhi Surah. Surat al-An'am is a miracle. So the Prophet SAW is there in Mecca in about the sixth year, and all of a sudden, he starts reciting Quran. And it goes on and on, the whole Surahs we do it one time, right? He keeps talking, the whole day he's reciting to them Surat al-An'am. And if you read Surat al-An'am, it is a very beautiful, coherent, very literally elevated, it's not just something you just start saying, you know, out of nowhere, right? Uh, so, the clear conceptualizing of Islam as a whole, as we were talking about. Islam as a way of life, as a civilization, was addressed in the Medani Surahs, right? And as we said, there is some overlap, yeah. Is it clear on this one? Okay, Jazakumullah. Can we please move to the next slide? Now, this is very crucial to understand, because this is the main problem of people who use the Quran to go astray. This is the number one issue here. And then is the Muhkam versus the Mutashabban. On the next slide, it will have the definition of that. Let's just read the verse here that talks about it. So in the Quran, God knew that people will not identify what they're looking at properly, and they will not give the proper respect to how we should relate with some verses versus... and they will not give the proper respect to how we should relate with some verses versus others. It says, Allah says, it is he who has sent down to you the book with clear and decisive verses, which are the foundation of the book. Other verses are ambiguous or allegorical. People with deviant hearts follow that which is ambiguous or allegorical. Seeking discord with their interpretation. No one knows its true interpretation except God. Those grounded in knowledge say, we believe in it, all of it is from our Lord, no one will be reminded except those of intellect, right? So this verse is at the very beginning of Surat al-A'ghraan. And what it's talking about how is the general reality of the Quran is clear decisive teachings of life and character and morality and law that average person can understand. We pray, Muslims should pray, they should daily keep up prayer. Now, what's all the details and what's the exception to the norm and what happens when you join traveling or all that? Those verses will come up and you need to understand them in their proper, deep understanding, right? Uh, we believe in God. Okay, what about the nature of God and this is creation and how he knows and all that stuff? Now that, the clear reality, there's one God, worship him alone. Nobody's doubting about that. Everybody knows what that is. But certain things about God might confuse people, right? Uh, so then there are other verses that are ambiguous and out of order. Now somebody might say with a rational question, why would God do that? Why does Allah want to confuse us? He does not want to confuse you. There are things that are deeper than just reading it once and that is why he sent prophets and that is why the inheritors of the prophets are whom? The scholars. The Prophet SAW said, Innaman Ulama, warrasatul Abiyat, right? Uh, that the scholars are the inheritors of the prophets. Meaning what? When the Prophet SAW was dealing with things or when his companions would have questions about what this Quran says or what he has talked of, they would come to him and he would clarify to them. Because what? He has divine wisdom. Now for a prophet, it's a special touch of divine blessing as well as an angel coming to them, talking to them. For scholars thereafter, it's people who spend hours on end researching and reflecting and listening to what those who came before them have all concluded about the details of what this thing is teaching and what the early people understood of knowledge versus the common folk who just read it a couple of times and are just simple believers looking to lead a righteous life. There's a big difference between a scholar who spent hours on end sitting with other scholars, learning what other scholars are reading, how their books are asking questions about those books and then the one who just reads some Quran to try to be a good person and make sure that they have a good character, right? Those are two different things. So you do not go to this one. Well, I don't know how many times, I've got confused. Some brother or sister goes on Facebook, guys, what do you think about this? Allah Akbar, right? Yeah, I don't know how many, I, I've seen that about religion so many times, but on medicine, you don't see this. You say, guys, my daughter is going through this medical thing, what do you think? You don't see that because they respect medicine. We have to respect religion in the same way, right? Uh, next slide please. Okay, the clear and decisive verses, the Muhkamat, are those which define Islam in basic creed and worship. So you have the pillars of creed and worship, right, and all that stuff. These are the majority of the Quran that's meant for all of us to read and understand, right? We're all meant to get and understand the basic teachings of Islam and we're all supposed to look for it and God, and find guidance in it. Uh, the ambiguous or allegorical verses are those which get into the details of belief and law. Many misguided Muslim groups in history relied on these which suited their desire in conflict with the mainstream. Obviously ISIS is a big example of someone who read a few verses that talked about war and they think that this is what they need to be doing. And all the scholars of the world and all the scholarly bodies and councils from this country to that country are saying, those people do not understand the war verses of the Quran and they are not seeking any good understanding. They clearly have some agenda, some desire, which is political in nature, that they're using the verses to achieve their goal. And they have no sincere religious devotion to listen to all of these scholars. I mean, Saudi Arabia has a pretty rigid style of literalism that, uh, many people disagree with. But pretty much across the board, all Saudi scholars are saying, these people are deviant misguided people. It's enough to say that the leader of Al-Qaida, Ayyun Zawahiri, when ISIS first started coming out, he called out, said, this is the leader of Al-Qaida. He said, those guys are misguided jihadists, you know? Now when somebody like that says it, you know there's something up really big time, right? So these people have been supporting suicide bombings and killing innocent Muslims and non-people for some time now and now they're saying these guys are misguided. I'll give you another strange example and this is where, how many of you heard of the term Sufism? Okay, so Sufism in the early generations of the Muslims, it was a beautiful concept that had good meaning, right? It meant those Muslims who are focusing on spirituality and character development and the remembrance of God on a daily basis, they don't talk too much, when they talk, they're wise, they don't sleep a lot, they are in reflection and this is what it was understood, right, at the very early Tabi'in and right after them. Some of those great scholars were known as this. Over time, it developed into all kinds of other things, right? And so you have people dancing around fire, you know, I'll give you one example of the Quran example. So the end of Surat al-Hijr, it says, Wa'bud Rabbaka, haptah yatiyaktiyya tibi, right? Worship your Lord until certainty comes to you. So the word certainty here, what does that mean, right? Certainty, what do you mean certainty, right? So all, all of the Sahabah who explained this verse have agreed. This is talking about death. It's a well-known Arabic colloquial, or not colloquial, uh, allegorical phrase that death is certainty. Because why? Right now, people are struggling with faith. There's so many proofs, all rabbis inside of us in scriptures of faith. We can have very strong faith. But once you're dead and two angels come to you and you see them, what is that? Is that faith? Do you believe in those angels? You know those angels, they're right there. You see what I'm saying? That's certain. When the Yom Al-Qiyamah comes and you're coming out of a grave, is this a belief now? This is not, right now it's a belief, right? At that point, it's certainty, right? So the Ayah is saying, worship your Lord to the best of your ability until death comes to you, right? Well, there is a Sufi group and they got some traction and people started to have a different idea about spirituality where the leaders were saying to their students, you have to do pray five times a day, do the thikids, you have to fast on Malan. And then the student said, but you're not doing these things. You don't pray when it's time for prayer, you're not fasting on Malan. And he said, well, you know, what happened is I've become certain about my faith. Because of this Ayah right here, because I'm certain about my beliefs, I don't have to do that anymore. So when you reach my level, then you can, you know, and then he said, how will I know? I'll let you know. This is a real group of people written in the books of Islamic history. So the mainstream scholars, Ahlul Sunnah, the mainstream orthodoxy, they heard of this and they went to it and it was a very easy discussion. Okay, are you saying that Prophet Muhammad SAW did not reach certainties? Right? Is that what you're trying to say? And so what do you mean? So well, he, he was worshiping God and even when he's so sick, he's sitting down praying, right? So what? You know, they said, classic. Well, what about the Hadith where the Prophet SAW, where he was making Astaghfar seventy times a day? He said, Astaghfirullah. Was he sinning? Do you believe him to be sinning? They're like, no, we know he's not sinning. He's giving an example about how to be and he's addressing sin being around him and his lack of contentment with it, right? It's said, similarly, the Prophet is just teaching you how to worship and, you know, and then the Surah is saying, this is not with any of his teaching. He never told anyone about this thing, this understanding that you're bringing was never there. Not by Prophet Muhammad, he didn't say anything about it, not his companions, not even those rightly guided people after him in the Tabi'in. So for the three early generations, they clearly, none of them reached certainty because they were all doing this. So now you, all of a sudden, Masha Allah, you're big turbo and you're nice thing and everything, you think that you're now some holy person. This is where we have to be careful about our religion. We always need to go back to what the Quran teaches and we have to respect what is known to be the clear understanding coming from scholars that are on ambiguous or allegorical verses. Okay, uh, uh, oh, I'll give you a good example, the modern one, right? How many of you heard somebody say, hijab is not in the Quran? Man, I went to an Isna convention, a lady had a book and everything, she had a table and everything, she was talking, that's what she said. And so, uh, this is against fourteen centuries of understanding the Holy Quran. So in Surat al-Nur, in Surat al-Ahzaab, the concept of covering the entire body are very crystal clear from an Arabic linguistic temple, right? Wal yadhrubna bikhumuri innah ala jyubin, right? In Surat al-Nur, Allah SAW said, and tell the believing women to lower their gaze and to hide their beauty except which naturally appears and have them draw their clothing over their body. He says, khumuri innah, which is the word of khimar. Khimar in Arabic, it comes from the same thing as khamar, right? Khamar does what? You khamar al-aql. It covers over your mind, which is in your head, right? And so the idea of covering the head is right there. The word khimar has always, before the Quran, in every poem, when it talked about having a khimar, it meant to cover over the head, right? That was always there, right? Same thing in Surat al-Ahzaab, right? When it says, uh, uh, Yudineena alaihinna min jlabi binnah, right? It says, tell the believing women to bring over their bodies, to pull down over their bodies all, uh, their garments, right? And jlabi binnah means the whole body, right? Jubba is a, uh, type of garment that Arab women have used to refer to that. Uh, but, uh, the, the word durim is to cover the whole body, which is why the Hambari Madaab and the Afghani, uh, Hanafis have said, the whole thing, face, hand, all that needs to be, which that's a minority interpretation. The vast majority of scholars said face, hand and the vast majority Hanafi juris and defeat, uh, can be seen, those are the naturally appearing things. Uh, so if we can please move to the next slide. What are some examples? So the clear verses are the pillars of faith and worship. We believe in God, he is one, he's perfect, he's pure, there's nothing like him, so forth, right? That's the foundation, right? Now it says in the Quran, and he looked at them and his hand and this and that and other, those are the ambiguous allegorical, we don't know what those mean. We accept them the way they are, God knows best what they mean. What is the benefit if I know what exactly does that mean, right? It's about God, he's above and beyond anything. That's why we keep saying, Allahu, Akbar what? Anything I can think in my mind, he's greater and bigger and above and beyond that. So let me not try to fit him in my mind, right? That is an Islamic concept. Uh, the belief in angels, there's angels, they do this and that and the other, we know that. Now how and what is that? I don't know. It's that, I don't need to know that. It's not going to help me in my religion of being a better person to know the details of what angels are up to. Same thing with the jinnies. The Muslims got really occupied with jinnies. We were told by the Prophet SAW, don't mess with the jinnies, don't worry about them, mind your own business. Uh, if you're concerned about an affliction, read your daily prayers and your remembrances and so forth and then it's between Allah, right? Uh, La yusribuna illa ma kattam allahbulana huwa muna. Nothing going to happen to me except for Allah will. And then the, uh, the concept of moral integrity and good character are all foundational things. That family values are very important. The family is the nucleus of a healthy society. A man and a woman get married, this is going to bring a family, that is very important. Now the details of the marriage and the divorce and all that, that, those are details that you need scholars to help you to understand. Uh, and those would fall under the other one, right? Justice must be established. We know that. How is justice to be established? That is not something that you can just, you know, decide for yourself or interpret a verse that may be allegorical or ambiguous. So the descriptions of God, those are ambiguous or allegorical. We're not meant to know the nature of God in completion, incomplete. We know God is one, there's nothing like him, that he is our creator, he is our provider, our sustainer. We know that, that's clear. Those are unambiguous, clear cut. Now the details about that and the how on that, you don't mess with that, right? Matters of the unseen. It's unseen. It's there for a reason like that, not meant to be seen, right? Details of family law, details of war engagement. It is not for any person to decide, here's how I should fight a battle or a war, right? That is the, according to the consensus of Muslim scholars throughout fourteen centuries, a state of Muslims has a certain apparatus of scholars and an executive authority who will decide when and how to go into war engagement. That is not happening with all these characters blowing stuff up and cutting off heads in the world. Nobody's following that. Why? Because, Yantabi'una ma tashaba ha'minhu, bittigaa al-fitna, wittigaa taufiri. That's what the Quran said, that those people are following their desire. And certain eloquent uses of language, right? That it is very important for a translator of the Quran to mention in a translation that I'm, like for example, the, in the very beginning of Baqarah, when it talks about, methaluh ladina, methaluh ka methaluh zinna, zoruqadnaara. That's a very deep eloquent presentation of concept. And if you look in the Tafsires, I'm going to tell you, there's like ten different Tafsires for those Ayah. And when I say Tafsires, great scholars from a thousand years ago that had very different ideas, the Ayah Surat al-Nur, right? The Ayah Surat, Allahu Nurru Samai, so many Tafsires on this Ayah, right? To present one as that's what it is and that's what it means, you should, that, be careful. You can say, it seems like this is what I know about it. Just be careful before presenting Quran from the Mutashab, from something that is ambiguous or allegorical as something clear cut and defined and definitive, right? And that's where we get, uh, certain things where people get misguided from the Quran because they're looking at it, why does it say that? It doesn't sound right to me. Well, number one, you're not God and you're not a prophet and you may not be a scholar, probably not a scholar. So be careful before you make a final decision on the reality of the Quran or what it's teaching when it seems, if it's any part of the Quran that gives you a doubt, you're like, why is it like that? I don't, it doesn't, for sure, that's going to fall under what? The ambiguous and allegorical, because the clear cut Quran is fitrah, it's the natural inclination we all have. Everybody will naturally understand it. You know, that's, that's what I felt when I read the Quran the first time. I felt like for my whole entire life, I've had certain ideas about God, read the Bible, I've read some Buddhist hymns, I've read the Taoist Confucianism, the Zoroastrianism, I read the Kabbalah Jewish stuff. I read some, I was interested in religion, right? But when I read the Quran, I felt like, man, pinpoint, dealing with all of my theological and philosophical dilemmas making clarity. The, the concept of light and darkness became like the clouds went away, right? So that's, that's how we'll feel if we read the Quran in the right way. So that basically concludes our introductory, uh, class, uh, to the Quran. Do we have any questions about the content today? Is it clear? So it's all Muhkamat. Bunnu udd dars, Insha Allah. So now, do you have any questions about what we will be studying? Does everybody know, like next week, do we know what we're studying? We're going to go into Istigahah because the Quran, Zawwah, wa idha quraatul Quraanah, fasta'iy billah. If you read the Quran, seek refuge with God, right? So, so there's the Bismillah. Is Bismillah an Ayah from the Quran? What is it? Why is it in the middle? What's the purpose of all that? In reading Quran, why some shaykh in the Salaah, he did like that, why some didn't? We're going to talk about that. Then we're going to go through reading of Surat al-Fatiha and gain some real good insight to how Surat al-Fatiha is the mother of the book. It contains all, see, what happens with Surat al-Fatiha, it becomes a routine. You just say, and you don't really, it's not really affecting your heart and mind and changing your lifestyle when in fact each verse is going to affect your whole outlook and your attitude towards life, right? If it's embraced in that way. And when you study a Tafsir, which there are many, many, many Tafsires of Surat al-Fatiha. We could actually take Surat al-Fatiha and go probably twenty weeks with you if we want, right? And there are many examples and I'll give you those next week. I'll give you resources that if you want to do that, there are scholars who have done that in English, Hamdulillah, and order to, they are available for you, Insha Allah. Any questions, Insha Allah? Yes, Asma.
Just, uh, if you can more clarify about the people of the book. Is the concept of people of the book and the time of Rasulullah and now it's still the same and, and how, how does it differ?
And that's a very good point because a lot of people have a, a, a question about this one. The term people of the book, when it was said in the Quran, it was referring to a, across time issue. And what it is, people of scripture, people are saying, I follow a prophet that had, was given revelation. And our scripture says, that was a prophet and he was given revelation, right? So those are people of the book, right? So, uh, I remember one brother was trying to argue with me that, uh, well, when they say in Surat al-Maghdah, you can't eat from the meat of the people of the book, well, these aren't people of the book anymore. There are other arguments that are much stronger in the argument to not eat this meat here and we're not going to go into all that right now. But this is not one of them, right? Because in the time of Prophet Muhammad, there has already been the council of the Trinitarian, they all believe in Trinity, Father, Son, Holy Spirit, Jesus died for our sins. There's worshiping on Sundays is now the reality, no more Saturday, the Sabbath, which was the original Jewish. What Jesus was doing, worshiping on Saturday, they stopped all that, they went with the Roman Sunday, sun god thing and turned it into the holy day for Christians, simply to separate themselves from Jews, right? So that what we know as people of the book, today Jews and Christians, uh, that was all available in the time of the Prophet SAW. Um, if you want to make this argument, there's another angle you can bring. Are the Muslims today like the Muslims back there? And the Quran, talking only to those Muslims and not us? So clearly there are some human evolution and spirituality gets tainted by human thought and people's faith goes down and up and all of that, that's there. So definitely people of the book is, is a, it's going to be there until the day of judgment, Insha Allah. Actually, until Jesus comes.